I would like to advise all those present that notice of this regular meeting of the Municipal Council of the City of Bayonne for August 13, 2025 has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Publics Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey. Notice of time and place of the meeting has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted and filed with the city clerk and with the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger. An additional notice of time and place was posted and filed with the city clerk and was forwarded to the Star Ledger and Bergen Record on August 8, 2025. The regular meeting of the Municipal Council is now in session. Ms. Medina, please call the roll.
Mr. Booker?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Weimer?
Here.
Mr. La Palusa?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So I think we're going to move some things up in the front. I'd like to call Suzanne Kavanaugh up to give an introduction for a backpack donation, and I'll let her explain a little bit more about some of the corporate sponsors as well.
Good evening, Council President and Council and other officials from the City of Bayonne, and good evening to the public that's present with us today and out in our cable land. I would like to bring up Violia's representative, John Libits, and the Schauger Group, who is presently navigating our lead service lines in the community, Don Schauger. Great community partners for the City of Bayonne. Not only does Violia engage in educating our youth as far as the water sciences go and opportunities for jobs in the future, they also engage in other community events and certainly a great community partner for the City of Bayonne, one of them which is to partner with the Schauger Group, who is here to donate backpacks, 75 backpacks, to the Board of Education. Dr. Dagnan and Kim are here to accept the donation. They're filled with supplies for the needy children in Bayonne.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Council President, members of the Bayonne City Council and city officials and our distinguished Board of Education members and the community. On behalf of Violia and the Schauger Group, we would like to donate 75 backpacks for children in need to the Board of Education, which are filled with school supplies. We have a strong commitment to community, okay? Working in the community every day. It's important for us to remember, you know, our needy and people who are in need, okay? So us as business partners who work with the community, we do, as Director Kavanaugh said, we do partner with our business community, the Schauger Group, and we do meaningful giving back to the community. It's very important to remember that, you know, where we come from, the families we serve, and this small donation, we would like to, you know, please have you accept these backpacks for the children in need for the City of Bayonne.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Council President and the Council members, and of course, on behalf of John Neese, our Superintendent of the School and Central Office, and of course, our Board of Education, we do appreciate this. And with schools starting in two weeks right after Labor Day, you can be sure that this will get into the hands of our children, and we're very excited. We're also looking forward to working with you. We did this last year on our program for our students, I believe it was in fifth grade. We talked about water science throughout the year, and we'll look to continue that partnership this year. We'll start it right after Labor Day. We'll meet and we'll get the kids going.
Thank you very much.
Okay? Thank you. We appreciate you.
Dr. Dagnan, if I may, I'd like the community to know that this is, that both business partners are no stranger to contributions to the City of Bayonne, and this is perhaps the fourth or fifth year, Don, you can set me straight, seventh, that we have been the recipient of several different donations, one of which, of course, is backpacks, the other of which is turkeys at Thanksgiving, and there is no shortage of toys at my toy drive because they literally walk in with bags. So as you said, as Director Kavanaugh said, wonderful, wonderful business partners for the community of Bayonne solely for the purpose of giving back, and I personally am indebted to you, and I thank you.
Yeah, on behalf of the city, we're very thankful for your generous donations and always the continued support as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move the next add-on as well. Ms. Medina, you want to read that?
So the first one is moved by the council as a whole. It is a resolution denouncing hate and bigotry speeches and other comments made.
I'm going to let our second ward councilwoman, Jackie Weimer, who very eloquently wrote this up, we all agreed with it, and again, we're moving this as a whole. Thank you, Jackie.
No, thank you, and I'm going to ask Keith Gallant-Mait, please, Keith, if you don't mind, please step to the podium because you were the backbone and really the driving force in making us aware. I'm sorry, I will apologize to you because I did not realize all that was really going on in the community. What I thought was really, should have been given, no, there should have been no reason to defend us raising, the raising of the pride flag or us celebrating that heritage, and there was, and I'm sorry because I was unaware. And the council as a whole, when you came and stepped forward and allowed us the opportunity to offer an opinion and asked us for our support, I want you to know that nobody hesitated. And I took it upon myself, and I asked everyone if I could write the resolution, which we did. I worked with Jay Coffey, and we are ready to pass it. So it is with great pleasure that I share with you Resolution Number 25-08-13, whereas the Municipal Council of the City of Bayonne stands firmly against hate, bigotry, and discrimination in all their forms, and whereas our community must be a place where every person feels safe, valued, and respected regardless of race, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, ability, or background, and whereas we are committed to building a culture rooted in inclusion, understanding, and compassion, and whereas everyone deserves the freedom to be who they are, to live authentically, and to contribute to our shared future without fear or prejudice, now therefore be it resolved that we ask that all people work together to ensure our neighborhoods, schools, workplaces, and public spaces reflect the values of dignity and respect for all to ensure that hate in all its forms has no home here in Bayonne.
Thank you.
And that would be published.
Thank you, and I do appreciate it. Just as an additional comment, it's odd that here we are in 2025 having to actually denounce something like this, but here we are. And it's these small steps, I really do believe some of the greatest changes start with the smallest of acts, and this coming from the top, representing the entire City of Bayonne, can make a difference. It encourages people to say, no, we're better than this. And it also encourages people looking into Bayonne that we take a stand on this and that we want people to know that they're welcome here. And it's just important to know that we can't continue like this narrative of denialism.
Right.
It happens, and it happened when certain businesses tried to open in Bayonne, and it happened when somebody posted a Facebook photo of a black man getting lynched on one of the Bayonne Facebook groups. And so, you know, the decades of denialism is really what's at the core here, but the messaging coming from the top matters. It matters a lot. So I want to say thank you, thank you to every single person on the council for doing this. Jackie, thank you for leading it, and I know I'm deeply appreciated. I chose to come into Bayonne for a reason. I live here, I'm part of the community, and I also want to leave you with this thought, there's a lot of younger people.
Take your time.
I wish you could understand. There's a lot of young people where even though they may be surrounded by supportive people, families, it just takes one vile message of hate that could influence them to do something horrible. And I remember what it feels like, and I just don't want to see that for any young person, not in Bayonne. So thank you.
You're very welcome.
If I may, I would like to say to Keith, the last time you came up and spoke about this incident, I could not sit there and watch you emotionally express your feelings, and I said before, again, Bayonne is a unique place. I grew up here, and I've seen the changes, and I believe in Bayonne, and it will grow. And the fact of the matter is this resolution, and your speaking up, will allow other people who are quietly sitting in a corner to feel safe. And Bayonne is a good place to do that and a great place to start, and I'm proud of this council. Jackie, thank you, and we're here for you.
Anyone else? And on add one, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Nadrowski?
You might want to...
Oh.
You're black one of these.
He says no.
I truly apologize. Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Let's hope that's the only mistake tonight. Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Okay. Add two is from the Honorable James M. Davis appointing Tina Sisolino as the Health Officer effective August 13 at the salary of $104,291 and a resolution confirming said appointment. Would you like to move that as a whole?
Yes. Very well deserved. Congratulations. And for those of you who don't know, it's a very, very, very difficult exam to pass, so congratulations because that was a great job you did.
So on the resolution for appointment, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And at this time, we're going to ask Ms. Tina to come to the podium. After I state aye, you're going to state your name.
Aye. Solemnly swear. Solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
Impartially...
Impartially.
And justly perform...
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office of health officer.
All the duties of the office of health officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear...
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Oh, one is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey approving a financial agreement by and between the City of Bayonne and 15 East 23rd Street Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 15-21 East 23rd Street, which is identified as Block 198, Lot 1 and 2, as shown on the official tax map. Was introduced at the meeting held July 16, was published in the Bergen Record and posted on the bulletin board as required by law with notice that it be further considered for final passage following the public hearing at this meeting of August 13. Is now before the council for its consideration and the public hearing. And a resolution given the ordinance second reading is moved by the council president, Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey approving the financial agreement by and between the City of Bayonne and 15 East 23rd Street Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 15-21 East 23rd Street, which is identified as Block 198, Lots 1 and 2, as shown on the official tax map of the city. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Keith Gallant, 25 East 23rd. I was at the planning board meeting last night, and when you look at the map of how the building is laid out, all of the properties along Greg Lane and on 24th Street, properties that line up or butt up against the building, the new building, proposed building, get a five-foot buffer off the property lines, except for my house, that six-story building is right on the property line. And the house next to me, also, that six-story building with a six-story flat wall is right on the property line. And I mentioned this to Jackie a few years ago when I had my air conditioning unit put in, and somebody came to inspect, you know, and close out the permit, I was told I have to move it an inch because I was too close to the property line. So why does a developer get to build a six-story wall right on the property line when all the properties along Greg Lane have a five-foot buffer? And also the properties on the other street, on 24th, also get a five-foot buffer? And so why was my house exempt from having a five-foot buffer? And also the house next to me? Greg is not the owner of that house, couldn't make the meeting last night, and he can't make the meeting tonight, but that's my issue.
Was that question asked yesterday?
No, it wasn't.
I don't know the answer. I was just saying that I would be interested to know the answer to that.
If I could answer that question real quick, I always say I shouldn't say that. Last night, I spoke to the city professionals, and according to the information I got, I understand, if you know, I addressed you, and I said, well, why is that? Because I was a little bit unaware of myself. However, it was later discovered by myself that there were provisions that were made for you in your property in regards to that property line and the parking garage, and that's why, you know, you have your limited buffer.
I don't remember meeting with a soul about provisions being made.
Why don't we get a better explanation? The attorney for that project is here.
Okay.
Yes, please. Let's just, explain to us, Mike, please, what the reasoning and what exactly are the parameters?
Okay, so at that property line, there is a building, we stepped the building back. The building doesn't go to the property line. We stepped the building back. I think it varies between six and seven feet, six feet and six feet, 10 inches. It's actually nine feet, right adjacent to that.
It steps back on what floors?
So, in the front of the building. So what the planner was concerned with was the bulk in the front, right? He didn't want to overload it so that you couldn't see out of your driveway when you were backing out. So what he asked us to do is smash the building down in the front, which made everything crunch up, and so...
So just for, in layman's terms, so not that the building is on the property line, but the front of the building has an added setback?
It's got an added setback.
An added setback.
And the corner...
So the requirements are there, but not afforded an added setback that perhaps the front of the building has?
It's right. So the front of the building, so the front of his house will have that, like I said, the building will be stepped back, but particularly on the corner that is right next to his property.
Asking you to do that.
Right. It notches in, I think, nine feet.
Right.
So we provided the relief there, and, you know, to lay out the parking, we did need to utilize a lot of the ground floor then because the building had been smashed back.
And so it would be in the rear of the building...
Be the side in the rear, yeah.
Right, and it would be...
My backyard.
Next to, right, next to Mr. Gallant's property. Where is the building in relation to the property line?
It is on the property line.
It's on the property line?
Yes.
And what is the requirement?
It is that. That is the requirement.
It can actually go right up to the property line?
It can, yes.
So developer gets to build onto the property line, but I got to move my air conditioning compressor one inch?
Is that accurate? Well, I guess we don't...
Yeah, I don't know about that, but...
If you want to fight, you can call me. I understand that, but do you see the hypocrisy here? Okay, the absurdity of it? And here's the other problem, all the other property owners get the five-foot buffer. Why am I not offered that five-foot buffer, and why isn't Greg, who's next door to me, also offered the five-foot buffer?
To answer that, the planner, when we discussed that, felt that pulling the building back in the front and notching the corner was the most important setback.
Right. But if there's a requirement, I wonder if that required a variance?
I'm sorry?
And perhaps Director Skelander could help us.
No, it wouldn't have required a variance.
So again, in the negotiations on this redevelopment plan on this, again, the issue and again, the concern is to make sure that there's parking in the building here.
Right, and of course, that's at the forefront because we, and I'm certain, we certainly don't want not, you know, insufficient parking spaces to get an extra five feet that we would, but...
So with the parking that's off on the backside of the building there, their triple stacker parking, so in order to accommodate the size of the width of it, it's either we lose parking spaces in order to make sure that there's enough turning radius with the ramp. Our planning professionals and team decided that it was beneficial to, you know, to make sure that...
Go right up to the property line.
To the property line, but also in that limited area, but to make sure that there's enough setbacks, you know, so that the car, you know, getting in and out, you know...
Right, safely. And please forgive my ignorance, but would that have required notice to those residents that are adjacent or to that? I mean, is that going against the current zoning laws or...
The redevelopment plan in the area needs, so the area needs studies are noticed to the public. The redevelopment plans are made available to the public for hearing, both at the planning board and at the city council for the two hearings.
Right, so not necessarily targeted notices, but made available.
The area need studies are very powerful and wide-reaching that way. But area need studies are mailed directly to the property owners, and they are direct mailed within the 200-foot lists, which this property would have been given. The mail, the only mail I got was the certified letter for last night's meeting. I did not get any other mail that I can recall that warranted my immediate attention, and my question still remains, why is every other property owner on Greg Lane and on the other street afforded the five-foot buffer, and yet I'm not? And why didn't anybody actually meet with me and talk about this face to face? Why was it, why was the burden on me to have to come to you? I own that property. I've been here for 25 years. He hasn't.
So what I'm going to say, Keith, that notice would have went to you probably well over a year ago.
And real quick...
To be fair, Mr. Misselli has been here as lifelong resident.
No, his building has.
But you're referencing the developer.
It's my client's building. A lot of people make that mistake, and they blame me for everything that happens in Bayonne. It's not my fault.
Would there have been a notice that would have been provided?
No.
That's my question because I...
In the newspaper, there would have been no direct notice.
Public notice.
There's public notice, that's all the law requires, and we can't, the law creates the noticing requirements. For an area need study, it goes to the property owners, and it goes in the newspaper twice. For a redevelopment plan, it is noticed once.
So I'm sorry, I apologize. Just some clarification. So the area in need study would have been noticed to the property owners?
To the church, because they own the property.
Oh, to the, I'm sorry.
Because they're studying their property.
I see, I understand.
So they get noticed, the public gets noticed by virtue of the newspaper publication.
I see, so it's just put up for public notice.
Right.
It's not a specific notice.
It's not targeted to the neighborhood, it's targeted to the people who are being studied, okay? So that area need notice only goes to the areas that you're studying. The redevelopment plan, unlike some other, like the site plan hearing, for example, gives you the targeted notice to someone, right? But the redevelopment plans don't do that. Redevelopment plans are ordinances, just like all the other ordinances you adopt. They don't go to particular people, they just, they get published in the newspaper. We're having a hearing on a redevelopment plan for this site, come if you have a question. That's what the law requires. That's what we did, that's what was done here, that's what's been done on every redevelopment plan, from you guys to before you guys to before I even practiced. That's the way it is. And to answer the question, we comply with zoning. This project complies, there were some materials things, there was planters they were asking us to put on the church lane.
I believe you, I pick the colors.
There were very minor things that we were asking for deviations from, but it wasn't from this. We comply with the zoning. This is the redevelopment plan that the planning board adopted, have recommended to you, that the council adopted, and we comply with, the building is the shape that you asked it to be.
Right.
And so, you know, I'm not a planner, so I can't really tell you what was on the planner's mind, but it was a negotiation back and forth, and this is what the city came back and said, cut the building back this way and this way, and we did.
If I could interject real quick to the fact of the matter is, some of these questions that we were going over right now, we went over last night. Last night was a planning board meeting, that's where this conversation should have taken place. Today's meeting is based on the financial agreement, and I understand your concerns. I said last night to you, okay, hear me out, I said to you last night on my final comment that I said, wow, that's, you know, that's something to look into if you're the only one. And later on, again, I repeating myself, discovering the fact that there were provisions that were made. And the same thing with people talking about notifications, this is all public knowledge, all right? So nobody's not getting the information.
We don't have a real newspaper here in Bayonne, last time I checked, so saying, telling residents that...
We do have a website. We do have an official website.
Right, but what you're saying is you're putting the burden on every independent property owner in this city to go in and verify things on a website?
That this was done at this time.
That is an unreasonable burden to put on any property owner in this city.
I think the jersey was around.
Right, I certainly don't want these comments to become counterproductive, but here's what I want to share with you. At the time that this would have been started was probably a good 18 to 24 months ago, when that area need study would have been initiated. That likely would have either been in the community news, Jersey Journal, at that point in time. I was not aware, and again, I apologize for this, I would love to be able to say that we reach out personally to each resident that we know it's going to affect, but the fact of the matter is we just don't have the manpower to be able to do that. What I can say to you is the thought process and the design and the building of this building was done with those residents in mind.
Yeah, clearly some residents who got a five-foot buffer...
This was the best possible resolution to what could have been allowed there, and I know that that's not ideal, believe me. I have 500 units going up at the end of my block. I'm not overjoyed, but, you know, it's in many people's minds, progress, and it has... And it has, and the development and the moving forward in this city has really helped us as a city become independent and become financially secure.
Jackie, I'm not debating the issue. I understand you, I understand where you're coming from, I understand where everybody on the council is coming from. Listen, I've been in the city a long time, I understand that the budget deficit existed, and we've been able to use different procedures and methodologies to close that budget gap, to slow the rate of tax hikes on property owners, especially legacy property owners in the city. Everybody can understand that, okay? Nobody's, that's not what's for, that's not the topic here. We get that, okay? But to carve out a five-foot buffer for every single property that butts up against this building, except for my house and my neighbor's house, seems a little egregious. And the fact that the planners in this city just ignored that, and obviously, they were carving out that five-foot buffer for the other homes, and somehow, my house got ignored.
And I'm gonna tell you what I believe they looked at, first, I believe the requirement is actually three feet, and that's, of course, at the discretion of the city planners. And the lack of parking would have had a more significant impact on the residents than that.
So, why was I made, why was my property then made the sacrificial lamb for the parking space?
It just so happens that your property is adjacent to the parking garage.
But so are all the other properties.
But again, the front of the building, it was a safety concern for the other cars for yourself.
We're not talking about the front of the building, we're talking about the backside.
But it is, because of the required, what we required in the front of the building, so that you could safely come and go out of your driveway, we required a greater setback in the front and on the two sides of that building. So, it was, again, it was a greater concern that you have the ability to safely come and go in and out of your driveway, so that you were not, your vision was not impaired, than to build up to the property line.
But again, this is, this vote tonight is on the financial agreement. And I don't have an answer for you, and I'm sorry.
I get what the vote is on.
I just wanted to be able to comfort our resident.
As a property owner, what is my recourse at this point? Anybody?
Director Skelander, I don't, I'm gonna be honest with you. The planning board passed it as of last night, I don't know that you have a recourse at this point.
And I want to jump in. Counsel, for the, let me just add, so the decisions as to the setbacks, again, were looked at on the structures of the surrounding buildings there, not the property lines there, when we, in order for us to make accommodations for the parking, with all the different requirements for the uniqueness of a irregularly sized lot. This lot is not square, it's L-shaped in that regard. So, in order to meet the accommodations for that, those were some of the negotiations back and forth with our planners and the developers, you know, professionals on this, to make sure that the accommodations for the parking were met, given the fact that the parking back there are stackers. If we move the setbacks in, you know, north of it, we're putting the setbacks on that side closer to a structure there. This is as best as when we designed it, as much as we can with the, all the residents in mind.
Okay, one last thing, I also want to go on the record, I am not anti-development, so I just want to make sure everybody's clear to that. I am not even opposed to this building going up, I think it's actually a good, a good thing. I know I'm in the minority when it comes to the other residents who live in, around that area, but, you know, it's proximity to Broadway, there's, I can see the benefits of this particular project, I really can. So, I don't want to come across as anti-development. Listen, we're surrounded by water-on-three-sides people, the only way to go is up, okay? We get it. So, and it is a viable tool to help, you know, to help us manage, you know, the financial-
Stabilize our economy, exactly.
Right, so I get that, so I just want to make it clear to you guys, I am not opposed to the building. I think the building looks great, I think it's gonna add to that area, it's gonna bring people closer to Broadway, potentially consumer dollars, which would be wonderful. So, I just want to make that clear, that I am not on that side of the fence, okay? But I do need to know what my, what my options are as far as recourse here. And if you want to build up to the property line, you know, where I have to move a condenser one inch because of some code, some, you know, building code in the city, I can't, I can't even be an inch off, but they can come up to the property, right on the property line just seems really wrong. So, so, yeah, I need to figure out whether I need to take legal action at this point, and what my recourse is. I do not want to, I don't want to not see this building built, I want to be very clear on that, okay? I just think that it's just really unfair that my house and my neighbor's house got screwed over here.
So, Director Skelander, perhaps you could give Mr. Galant your phone number, and he might just, you might be able to have a conversation with him tomorrow, and this way, he could gain a greater, a better understanding, and this way, you know, perhaps there, I'm not certain at this point, there's, you know, anything that can be done, but at least he will have been afforded the information.
We're just like to say that, I can't speak for the city professionals, but sitting on that planning board, okay, all the considerations probably were in your favor, they were looking at the best interest for the residents. I know you're not happy with it, okay, and sometimes, I'm gonna say it anyway, sometimes we draw a short stick, but they were looking out for your best interests, and I believe that's what they did.
And I want to believe that that good faith, that you are, you are operating in that sense of good faith. I'm not looking to vilify anyone here, okay? That's not what I'm here for, and I'm not looking to stop the project. I just don't think that's a good idea either. I'm just asking, what recourse do I have? And what is fairness, considering that all the other property owners got the five-foot buffer, and I didn't, and neither did my neighbor? So, that's all I've got to say, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Galant, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, but again, just to reiterate, he's gonna speak to you tomorrow about those issues, but tonight's vote is on the financial agreement.
Yep. So, just on this ordinance, counsel, we have NW Financial, we have Dan Bankard, who's our city's financial analyst, on there, so he can kind of explain some of the financial terms and some of the negotiations back and forth with the property owner as how we arrived with the 25-year tax abatement with the $228,000 community benefit payment. Mr. Bankard, if you want to just kind of quickly go over some of the talking points, you know, from the financial analysis that occurred here?
Good evening, everyone, my name is Daniel Bankard, I work with NW Financial Group. I believe everyone on the council has received the memo that we prepared, dated July 14th. So, I'm gonna go through the memo, and if you have any questions for me, please feel free to let me know. To give a general description of the project, this is the site of the St. Michael's Church. It will be a six-story mixed-use building consisting of 114 market-rate units, approximately 2,700 square feet of retail space, and 119 parking spaces. The unit mix will be a mix of studio, one-bedroom, one-bedroom-plus-den, and two-bedroom units, but 100 of the 114 units are studios, ones, and one-pluses. We've also included currently available units in the surrounding area. You have a summary of what those rents are on both a nominal monthly rent basis and a per-square-foot rent basis. You'll see the developer is anticipating higher rents than what is currently available, so they are getting quite aggressive on their rent assumptions, just something important to note. Their operating expenses are right in line with other projects that we've reviewed. We have a database of 2024 audits for about 125 residential projects across the state of different sizes, and this range of 6,750 per unit is right in line with other projects of this size. The estimated project cost is $43.5 million. That includes the contract purchase price of the property of about $3.5 million, which comes out to $31,000 per unit, which is in line with, you know, land values in the city on other recently-approved projects. And it also includes the community benefit payment of $228,000, which is the, which represents $2,000 per unit. Before we considered a pilot of any kind, we looked at the project under a conventional tax scenario. We look at several different metrics of developer returns, net project value, internal rate of return, yield on cost. All of those metrics are below the market returns, so it'd be unlikely that this project would be financed and get the necessary funding from a lender. So, based on those findings, we do find it necessary for a pilot to allow this project to move forward. As it relates to the negotiations of the pilot, the developer originally requested a 30-year pilot, at 10% of gross revenue for 15 years, and 11% for the final 15 years. What's being proposed right now is a 25-year term, with the first 10 years at 10%, second 10 years at 11%, and the final five years at 12%. We've also incorporated a slightly more aggressive phasing of conventional taxes. As you are aware, there's a mandatory requirement for the pilot to be based on the greater of a percentage of gross revenue and a percentage of otherwise applicable taxes. So, that structure is years 1 through 15, 0%, years 16 through 18, 20%, years 19 through 20, 40%, years 21 through 24, 60%, and the final year at 80%. Under this pilot, the metrics of return that I spoke about earlier get to the lower end of typical market returns. So, we feel very comfortable with the proposed pilot as it stands tonight. As it relates to the benefit to the city, right now, the property is exempt, so it's not generating any tax revenue. Under the proposed pilot, once the project is stabilized, meaning 95% occupied, as it will take some time for the building to lease up, but once it is stabilized, the pilot is projected to be approximately $392,000, of which $373,000 will go to the city. That includes a 2% admin fee that is annual, and 100% of that admin fee goes to the city. Just in terms of fiscal impact, that's the second part of the analysis, we use the Rutgers multipliers from their updated 2018 study, which is pretty much the gold standard in the industry for projecting new residents and new public schoolchildren. That study suggests that about 220 new residents will come out of this project. And when it comes to public schoolchildren, again, I mentioned that 100 of the 114 units are studio and one-bedroom units. So, based on those multipliers, it's projected that four public schoolchildren will come out of this project. Just lastly, we've, there is an appendix A where you can see the 25-year projections of the pilot. So, over the 25-year term, it's estimated that the city share of the pilot will be about $12.8 million. And you'll see that that annual number goes from $373,000 at stabilization, by year 11, it's at $490,000, and by year 21, it's at $650,000 a year. And lastly, appendix B, which is the last page of the memo, that is the net benefit of the project. That considers the costs associated with those new residents and those new public schoolchildren, and we compare those costs to the projected city share of the pilot revenue. So, if you look at year two, again, the city share of the pilot revenue is expected to be about $373,000. The total costs associated with the residents and schoolchildren will be about $74,000. So, annually, the city will see a net benefit of approximately $300,000, and that number will increase as the pilot percentage increases, as rents increase, and as the phasing of conventional taxes comes into play. And I'm happy to answer any questions the group has.
You're basing this on the 95% lease-up in year two, I believe, or after year two?
Yes, we are assuming, I believe, 10 units, yes, so 10 units per month as the lease-up. So, the year-one number that you're seeing assumes 57% occupancy, and then year two and all subsequent years are based on 95% occupancy.
So, council president, just on that, you know, while that's a, you know, general standard of the assumptions, when we did the absorption study and the occupancy rate, one of the buildings that was currently being leased up during that time was well ahead of that, you know, 10 months. They were, you know, closer to being fully occupied and stabilized within six months.
Right, and all that depends on how aggressive the sales force is for their marketing room, so. Anybody have any other questions?
Yes, the community benefit, $228,000, is that earmarked already? I mean, that takes care of about-
No, no, it's not, again, it's, we're gonna have to amend the redevelopment agreement for that, but the language that we've used within the redevelopment agreement has been for parks, utility, public improvements, roads, sewer, you know, as the city needs fit for the surrounding area for that.
We need to revisit the parking issue like I mentioned in previous meetings.
And I guess I just want to make certain that the community does realize that right now, that property is generating exactly the wonderful lump sum of $0 in tax revenue. And so, in year one, that is $360,000 greater than what it would have had. And so, that's a tremendous impact and benefit to the city. So, again, necessary, you know, done in the best way possible, and so, does provide for a benefit. And the only thing I ask, and I've had these conversations 18 times, I'm certain Mr. Micali is sick of hearing me say it, but we do just absolutely need to make certain that those residents, it is a requirement of the management company, of the developer, that those residents are aware that they are not permitted on-street parking, they will not be permitted on-street parking or be afforded the ability to apply for a permit. And I have eight messages on my desk from residents that can't get a parking permit because they live in such a building.
And they're not being notified.
And they are not being properly notified, so it cannot be an inclusion in the fine print in the lease, it has to be publicly displayed and made aware, or I will go walk through every building and hand somebody a piece of paper.
Yeah, that conversation came up last night, and I also stated that it should be notified, that no one will be able to get a permit, and it should be notified, everybody should be made aware of that.
It does have to be at the forefront, so please just relay that to the management company. And it's safe to assume, I think we've had this conversation also, parking is included with their very aggressive rent dollar amount? Thank you, okay, I appreciate that.
When we did this ordinance, this parking ordinance, that's one of the requirements that we asked for, is that the landlord let them know, the tenants, that they cannot park out there.
Yes, the council last year did adopt an ordinance that there has to be a, okay.
The Lord agrees with me.
Yeah, yes. So, no, that they have to provide written notice, you know, to the tenants. The ordinance doesn't specify as to how, it says that they have to, you know, provide- Is that lightning?
That's why the movie was canceled today.
Yes, okay, so-
As Director Skelander, that's correct, right? There was a requirement that residents had to be noticed, potential residents, I just don't, quite frankly, that's not happening.
And we're getting inundated, which is the reason why we're passing this on to you to speak to the developer.
And there is a fine associated for failure to, for the landlord to comply, so we will-
And I do think, and again, so then I was afforded a copy of one of the leasing agreements, so I do think it is perhaps included in the leasing agreement. I'm not quite sure. I'm, I'm not quite sure anybody reads those.
Yeah.
And I, and again, I know the responsibility is on the tenant, which is why I really want to, I'd, I'd like for us to create a requirement that it is put, it is put up for public notice within the building, in the mailroom, in the package room, in the, I don't really care, but it has to be on
Could be in the parking garage, too.
Parking garage, wonderful.
Yeah, we can amend the, the ordinance for next month, though.
Absolutely, that would be terrific, thank you, Director.
So this way, it's not just in the fine print that nobody reads.
Exactly.
So maybe you can include in that, that there is all twenty-four-hour parking enforcement also, so make them aware of that, it would behoove them to utilize their parking space as opposed to getting ticked.
The travel hour notices why we
Behoove, good word.
All right, let's move on to the vote, then, if nobody has anything else to add.
Thank you, thank you, Director. Keith?
And it is financial related.
What's that?
It's financial related.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Hi, Keith Galant, twenty-five East Twenty-third Street. So, I, th- this is where I think, as a council and as a city, we, we end up in a messaging issue, a messaging problem. Last night at the planning meeting, you heard a lot of my neighbors say, well, we, that, that property should have had like six, um, two-family homes, just like the Bayonne boxes that are in that area. And now I know my property taxes are about thirteen thousand dollars a year, fourteen, so six times fourteen comes out to eighty-four thousand dollars a year, that if you put up Bayonne boxes on that same piece of prop, say, that same land, the city would get eighty-four thousand dollars a year.
A limited benefit to the city with no, with no
Right, meanwhile, while I am not a huge fan of pilots or extending pilots beyond fifteen years, to be clear, um, the financial benefit of the pilot far outweighs other housing solutions. So this is, again, I think, um, it, it, it's a routine messaging problem about how the math really works and why when people hear the word pilot, their backs go up immediately until the messaging about the real numbers, um, comes out. So I, I just think from a financial point of view, um, you would, um, make yourselves less of a target, um, if you did better messaging. Um, and you can fight the other issue of extending pilots beyond the resolution of fifteen years that was agreed upon at a different meeting, so, um
Mr. Galant, I was one of the proponents of doing fifteen years maximum, but the way it was explained to me and knowing the deficit, the pilots make the city so much more money in the last ten years of the pilot, it was so difficult between that and then giving community givebacks, it was very difficult for me to stick to that fifteen years.
And I, and I totally
And that's the reason why I've kind of like
I'm a numbers guy, okay? I get the numbers, and I think your messaging is going to be better, yeah, on the numbers, um, uh, where you will, um, uh, have less, uh, be, again, be, be less targeted for some of the, um, decisions you're making, um, because the numbers don't lie, and, um, and I think, um, while, I, I think the residents of the city are, are being maxed out in terms of their coping skills and as far as the rate of pace, rate and pace of change that Bayonne is going through, um, we need to adapt our messaging so that way people can wrap their heads around some of these, um, developments, um, because the numbers don't lie, all right? So, and yes, I get it, the, the idea of, of, of developers getting an extension to the pilots, that's a whole different topic that we can always, um, debate and discuss at another time, but
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Medina, let's get on to the vote.
Okay. Nothing else, no, um, no protests against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may I have a motion to close?
Move.
On the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza.
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Second.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
There's a lot to unpack, I'll be as brief as I can. Mr. Galant, you live up to your name, you're a very reasonable fella. Uh, like you, I'm not anti-development, though I'm often labeled as such. Um, I ha- I'm, I'm against the project for numerous reasons. Tonight, we discussed going right to the property line, electric parking, uh, the cars abutting backyards, I lived through the aftermath of North Street and Avenue A, the Oblong Building across from the bank, and every one of those residents complained about that, it was prior to my entrance, but not, not much prior to the council, so I got the phone calls after that was constructed. I anticipate same type of phone calls will come from this, uh, project, although they'll, they'll go to a different office. Also, I think it's, yeah, but I always do, I think it's laughable that the projected number of students or children to come from this project is four. I, just by myself, I'm trying to convince my fiancee to have four, and, and it's, and I'm losing that battle, but, you know. So I, I doubt
The chair should be happy to see this meeting.
Oh, you're right.
The secret is, work on them one at a time.
Exactly. So I, I just, I think that's crazy. Um, the other issue that was raised was, uh, pilots, financial agreements, the benefits to the city, and your taxes, and taxes continue to go up, and the budget is ostensibly balanced, but increases are projected, and all things, uh, happen in a city, in the life of a municipality, but in the last two years, we've seen large, uh, county and, and at times, school-related tax increases, and a look at appendix B demonstrates what I've been warning for some time, is that we should consider the Bayonne box, which I'm a big fan of in some areas, I think it would be a better fit in certain communities, but also having, uh, regular taxes as opposed to pilots, uh, provide a more equitable distribution of those taxes, and when the end of the year comes to look at whether or not we should be giving tax increases, having those other agencies, we'll call them, get their quote-unquote "fair share" might lead to a reduced overall increase. We should be considering that. The other thing that I've warned about, uh, in the old iteration of this council and the new iteration of this council, is the awesome power of the area need study, which allows for changes in, uh, plot and lot design, except, you know, I shouldn't call it that, but structural design of areas. It's, it's something that should be deeply, deeply considered. The, the last two i- issues I have, this was talked about last night, you mentioned, and we're here to vote on this today, you know, we might want to consider a, a policy of waiting thirty days from its, uh, appearance at a planning board meeting to its review at one of our meetings. We might also want to consider, uh, calling on our state officials, if we're not allowed to do it ourselves, but requiring that notice go out at the first level of the, of any project, at the area need level, to the people two-hundred feet away, as though they were, they would get a notice if construction was going to begin. So that way, it gives them more time, where without newspapers, not everybody's online, I, I, I don't see a problem with that, I think we should even put a space holder to look at that. If it's a state law, we should call on our state representatives to make an amendment to provide for that. If it's something we can do, I think we should do it. But I, I can't in good ki- uh, I vote no, and largely because, once again, we're giving away a pilot with incredible rates of rent, and I, I hope they get every dollar of it, but just the last two days, I got three phone calls of, and one poor gentleman is now out of his home and seeking, uh, residence at the Y, and we continue to just overlook it, and I'm glad we spent twenty minutes talking about notice in the laundry room for the parking, but we can't seem to get anything on the books with respect to rent stable, stability, so I vote no.
Mr. Perez?
For the suite, aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Again, I'll, I'll try and be very, very quick as well. I changed my thinking because of the amount of money that comes in the last years of the pilots, the amount of money that was, uh, the city was about to make, and also, um, uh, some of the points that Mr. Carroll brought up, I, I realize that there are certain individuals that maybe cannot afford this and everything, but when we did the absorption study, which I know you called for as well, the state average was ninety-two percent, in Bayonne, the, uh, occupancy rate was closer to ninety-six percent. So somebody's affording these rentals, whether I like it or not, or somebody else likes it or not, they're very popular, people want them, people want to rent, so, um, again, I have to do what's good for everybody. I live in a two-family home, that's what I feel is, uh, beneficial to me and my family, but the apartments, if you make a nice big building, they definitely draw more tax, and Mr. Galant, you said it yourself, you can understand, whether you like it or not, we all understand the financial parameters. Up here, you look at things differently than when I was just a regular resident, now I'm have to worry about paying pensions for city workers and, and making sure that I have enough to provide for different things like parks and, and asphalt and, and doing all these different things that would be beneficial for the whole city, and that's the reason why I look at these pilots differently now than I did several years ago. With that, I don't want to keep going on and, and talking more, I'll vote aye.
Okay. Oh, two is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne County of Hudson, New Jersey, approving a financial agreement binding between the City of Bayonne and Bayonne Energy Center Urban Renewal LLC for the lot property located at four-oh-one Hook Road, which is identified as block four-nineteen, four-nineteen, lot one, as shown on the official tax map, was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held January, July sixteenth, was published in the Bergen Record and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of April thirteenth, August thirteenth, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by the council president, given the ordinance second reading, Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the City of Bayonne County of Hudson, New Jersey, approving a financial agreement binding between the City of Bayonne and Bayonne Energy Center Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at four-oh-one Hook Road, which is identified as block four-nineteen, lot one, as shown on the official tax map of the city. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it, the council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may I have a motion to close?
A move.
On the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
A move.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
And, uh, just so you know, this is a, um, on construction cost alone, the pilot is based on, not revenue-based, but, uh, they do provide energy to our grid, and with that, I vote aye.
Oh, three is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne Chapter Ten Taxation and Special Improvement Districts, which was introduced and passed the first meeting held July sixteenth, was published in the Bergen Record and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of August sixteenth, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by the council president, given the ordinance second reading, Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne Chapter Ten Taxation and Special Improvement Districts. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it, the council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may I have a motion to close?
Move it. Second.
On the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it. Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye. Can we move the next one as a whole, please?
Sure. Okay, next one, oh, four, is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne Chapter Twenty-four Water and Sewer Service, which was introduced and passed the first meeting at the meeting held July sixteenth, was published in the Bergen Record and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of August thirteenth, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing, and a resolution moved by the council as a whole, given the ordinance second reading. And on the resolution for a second reading, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne Chapter Twenty-four Water and Sewer Services. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it, the council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may I have a motion to close?
A move.
On the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage, do you want to move that as a whole also?
Yes, please.
And on the resolution for final passage, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Uh, it's a very good program, uh, if you don't know, the lead service line replacement will be paid by grants, and so this way, we'll not, uh, ask the homeowners to also pay for permits, and I vote aye.
Oh, five is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne Chapter Seven Traffic, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held July sixteenth, was published in the Bergen Record and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of August thirteenth, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez, given the ordinance second reading, Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
She stepped out.
Mr. LaPalooza? Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne Chapter Seven Traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it, the council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may I have a motion to close?
A move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
A move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, council. I'm here to speak to you regarding the property of 85 East Second Street. I appeared before the council in October, and I was told that the council did not, could not speak to the matter because of those litigation with the state of New Jersey. But I'm going to guess that's been a change over the last couple of months. Although the scrap metal has calmed down mostly because of this tariffs in China, and I can speak for the industry itself, it's down 75% from North America exports compared to last year. So the piles continue to grow on Lexington Avenue and 85 East Second Street. And the reason I think things may have changed because on June 27th, this memo was issued by the Bayonne Fire Department. Due to potential inhalation hazards, all members on any fire department business operating within or directly adjacent to the EMR juror port facility located at 85 East Second Street shall wear a K95 protection mask at all times. A similar memo was issued by the Bayonne Police Department. So I'll ask again, has anything changed in regards to litigation with the state that these, both these memos were issued?
I'll answer that, if you don't mind. Okay, there was a matter before the Hudson Gaun, Hudson, it's an appeal, uh, several matters before the Hudson County Construction Board of Appeals that were withdrawn, and I have the bad microphone again, I apologize, that were withdrawn by the, um, by the appellate without prejudice. And I believe they're going to be reinstated, the appeals, in September when the board starts to reconvene again. Those directives were issued by the police fire department in connection with a movie shoot, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, in connection with a movie shoot that was taking place down there. Um, that was just a prophylactic measure on behalf of the, uh, chiefs, uh, in connection with that property, with the knowledge that there had been, uh, a look at the property by the DEP and the Hudson Regional Health, um, entity. Um, I don't know if that SOP is still in intact for the, um, police department, uh, and the fire department, but I know it was specific to that movie shoot. I don't know what that movie shoot involved, but that's what, that's what it emanated from. I don't think it had anything to do with the litigation. Uh, I think it was just the chiefs being extraordinarily careful, and they should be with their, with their, uh, men, uh, if they were going to be on-site for the shoot. And I don't know what the shoot was for.
And Jay, I agree. I, I love my firemen, I love our police officers, but what about our residents? I have videos now where the metal's actually falling into the water, and nothing's being done about it.
Well...
And I've, Mr. Nunez is on my Christmas list now. He's been at my house so many times, he's Hudson's DEP. We're now appearing Christmas cards.
Okay, so, a gentleman from the DEP has been there.
Mr. Nunez comes down once or twice a week, but I call him.
Okay, and...
But unfortunately, I live on Hobart Avenue.
I understand.
So the noise isn't as loud as it is on the residents.
Wait, are you calling Mr. Nunez there about noise or about the metal in the...
Noise and dust, everything.
Okay, and, and has the DEP... Remember, we don't have jurisdiction over this, Jean. I mean, I think if the council had their way, we would. But we don't. The state of New Jersey and Hudson Regional have jurisdiction over it.
Can we change the zoning?
That?
Can we change the zoning? We've changed it, we changed it over 10 times since World War II.
Yeah, and if you look at all the pictures of that property from World War II, it's a lot nicer now than it was 20 years ago, 15 years ago, 30 years.
The residents of First You would not agree with you, sir. But thank you, council, for your time this evening.
Anthony Segarra.
Good evening, council president, members of the city officials, council members. My name is Anthony Segarra. I'm from the Bayonne Economic Opportunity Foundation, executive director. I'd like to take a moment to provide some clarity on the Holy Family Project. First, I want to thank the city of Bayonne and the community for their support. Our intent has always been to meet the needs of the underprivileged children and families who cannot afford quality care, education services under the Head Start Program. The Bayonne Economic Opportunity Foundation has been serving the community since 1965, and is the first time we will be bringing three separate locations together under one roof. This will allow us to expand our services of classroom for children, something our city has never had before. The Holy Family School, which holds a proud history of many graduates, will become the new home for the Bayonne Head Start Program. Here, we'll continue to support the children and families with much more needs, programs including pre-care, after-school care, and the first time ever early Head Start from zero to three years old. With that being in mind, I would like to provide, if it's okay with the council, a Holy Family timeline. The building was purchased on September 2017. There was a course analysis between October to December of 2017. We applied for the first grant from the federal grant. We received that one year later of August 2018. We also applied for additional funding for the major renovation, which took about two years later after review with the federal government. We upgraded in December 2018 electrical. We had architect inspector walk through through January 2019 all the way through July 19. That was phase one. Phase two was the environmental review, which took about between March 2019 through April 2019. There was designs for the flex room, commercial kitchen, design secure that was implemented in December 2019. At that point, we received the first final renovation grant from the federal government in September 2020. Phase three, COVID came. From September 2019 all the way through March 2022, everything was stalled, held up, inflation continues. We moved forward. The major renovation plan began in January 2020. Espaces boiler remove was done by November 2020. Major bidding process was provided by the city of Bayonne from January 21st through November 21st. There was a few bids that went through. Finally, we secured the final bidding from the city from July 2022. There was additional remediation at the school on July 2022, a full demolition. Roof replacement was completed in July 2022. A new HVAC system installation was completed on May 2022. At that point, we asked for additional funding from the federal government. We applied on July 2022. It took three years in review at the federal government. We finally received the final grant on May 2025. But that did not pause us. We kept on moving forward. As you already know, in January of 2025, there was a pause on the federal funding, which impacted our agency and across the nation. Finally, as I mentioned, May 22nd, 2025, we received the final part of the grants that will put the school finally back together. Soil sampling continued, remediation currently right now. We're expecting that to be completed by September 2025. Now, our projections will be, we revised our planning design to include bathrooms in every single classroom for these children, and that design will be completed by August 2025 this month. Bidding, we're hoping the city will pick up the bidding quickly as possible. So our expectation will be hopefully by September 2025. The final construction, hopefully, when everything goes through, will hit ground again on October 2025, hoping within seven months by April 2026 it will be completed. Licensing will be visiting from New Jersey hopefully by May 2026, hoping to get occupancy certification by June 2026. The final school should be open by August and September 2026. So I just want to provide clarity. Any questions? I'm here.
Thank you. We've all been anxiously waiting for the, um, final, you know, build out, but, uh, it's been a long road, eight years so far.
But thank you so much for your support, everything that you do for the city and for the Bayonne and for the citizens here in Bayonne as well. Thank you so much.
Council President?
Yes.
May I?
Yes.
As a proud graduate of Holy Family Academy, I won't tell you what year. Um, I'm sorry that I missed something you were saying about the bidding process in reference to the city. What is it that you still need?
Um, as I mentioned before, we're hoping that the bidding process will be picked up as soon as we get the design back, and we'll be providing that to the city with your attorney, and then hopefully the city will, you know, the bidding process on your end will take place right away.
I spoke, I spoke with, uh, Al Sunday, their architect today. Uh, the information's going to be provided to us, I think, tomorrow.
Great.
Uh, and then the process would be that we go out for bid for the, uh, whatever is required, get the bids back, and start doing the work, um, hopefully by October.
Thank you so much. The funds are available in our accounts. As I mentioned, I want to move quickly so we could get our kids to a new facility. And since you're a graduate there, we do have papers that's going to be there, and we're planning to build a wall for all the graduates there, and... Well, thank you so much, council. Any other questions?
I have one question. Uh, can we at least be provided, I know we're all aware of the fact that the timeline and the effort that you put into it, but just as a reference when we're referring to the project, can we get a copy of that?
Absolutely.
To the council and...
I could give you a copy now if you'd like.
I would be appreciative. Thank you.
All right, no problem. Any other questions?
Make sure, make sure you put a picture of my daughter. She graduated.
Absolutely. I get so much feedbacks on that. And, you know, it's, I'm hoping everything goes well planned. I, I did speak to the mayor about it. I'm hoping to have a parade, you know, when the school opens from the old school, and hopefully we have the kids open up the ribbon so they can go right in.
Sounds like a nice idea. If you want to give the copy to the clerk, uh...
I will.
Ms. Medina, and we'll make copies for everybody.
And, and I can share with you that there are tremendous, uh, well, there are not a tremendous amount of, but there are the Sisters of St. Joseph still, um, are at, uh, you know, a congregation. There are many of them still alive that would love to be invited to that.
Absolutely.
And that would be terrific, right? Um, there, there are many that were there, um, for the St. Andrews closing and things. So they would really welcome that opportunity, and I too, as a benefit of, of a Holy Family.
We'll, we'll make it a huge event, and...
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Every time I hear Sisters of St. Joseph, I...
Here's the copy that I just read. I'm going to give it over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Saint Vinnie's check. Sisters of St. Joseph.
Next, next speaker is Mike Bussigno.
Good evening. Mike Bussigno, 42 West 23rd Street. Uh, the Bayonne Nature Club will be having a shoreline cleanup this Saturday at Rakowski Park with the Hackensack River Keeper. Starting at 9:00 AM, we'll be meeting at the gate at the Hudson County Park. We try to do a cleanup once a month, and that's will be this one, this Saturday. Now, let's look at tonight's resolutions to be considered by the council, CR 1 to CR 30. These resolutions equal over $200,000 of taxpayers' money. All good things for the city and the community. The Yellow Crown Nightheron, declared as a city official bird, carries a zero cost to taxpayers. The benefits in dollars, education, tourism, and community pride is priceless. Bayonne already has an insect as a city bug, the Bayonne bees. So why not also have a city bird? The UEZ will love this. I can see the billboard already. Come to Bayonne and enjoy the nightlife and the nightherrons with a picture of the Yellow Crown Nightheron. The school students, the boy scouts, the girl scouts could adopt the nest program and monitor them. With over 20 nests this year, there's enough to go around. I can only imagine the artists and photographers just flocking in to Bayonne for the award-winning pictures. And let's not forget the Bayonne cruise port. I can see the royal yellow crown of the seas sailing from Bayonne, May to September during the nesting season of the Yellow Crown Nightheron. And all this council has to do is give its approval at no cost to the city or its residences, all for the joy and beauty of nature. So again, asking the city to call the Yellow Crown Nightheron the Bird of Bayonne.
So, Mike, I, I did explain to you before the meeting started that, um, September will probably be the meeting that will discuss it, and we'll have some discussions before that as well, but it would appear, I could not do it for the August meeting. I thought about it. There was just a lot going on that I could not get on.
That's understandable.
So September will be the meeting for that. We have a couple other loose ends that, uh, we have to make some decisions with, uh, different licenses and different things, and September's the day that we take care of all family business. So we'll take care of it.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'll give you a picture. Mike Augustiniec has taken his picture. I'll put, you can have it on your desk so you don't forget about it for this next meeting.
What I would like, what I would like is, if you have the locations of the 20 nests, I would love to have that.
Okay, now, I do have the locations, because we've gone to the, the herring count, the New Jersey Herring Count with the...
If you can get that to us, and then we'll make copies for everybody.
Okay, and he said, Mike Augustiniec did say he will have a big blow-up picture if you want one for the council chamber, and we also have artists that are looking in, into do paintings for these, so...
Yeah, I don't know if we're going to put a painting in the council chambers, but we're going to talk about the, uh, naming of the bird for next month.
Okay, and they have the, I know, I know plenty of artists would be loved to hang them into the, uh, Bayonne Public Library and everything, because I also have a, a display there now on a Driftwood Art, so...
Well, you could also, we have a display out in the hallway.
Yes.
We would love to have a display with, uh, some of the pictures of all the wildlife, but especially the Yellow Crown Nightheron.
Yes, we have plenty of them here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mike, you ought to think about the Bayonne Nature Club, uh, putting in pictures of also of the good things that you do, and we'll let you put all your pictures in the cases out front.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Moving forward, it is an ordinance for introduction. It is an ordinance authorizing acquisition of real property in the city of Jersey City for public purposes, and a resolution fixed on Wednesday, September 17th at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It's moved by the council president. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, seven is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne County of Hudson, New Jersey approving the redevelopment plan 4745-747 Broadway, which is identified as Block 139, Lots 18 and 19, as shown on the official tax map of the city, pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, and a resolution fixed on Wednesday, September 17th in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and a final passage. It's moved by Councilmember Perez. Mr. La Palusa, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Uh, no, this is tied up, I understand, with a parking issue related to the Holiday Tree and Trim site. I would just, I know we have 30 days, uh, before we address it again, but I would raise the red flag of, we've been down the road before, of parking related from one project to another, and it's, it's a quagmire. I just issue a warning.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Director Skender, I have a question. And Councilman Carroll raises a, a good issue. So if, if this project, while it is independent, its parking requirement is dependent upon another project being, um, completed?
Yes, that is correct. So with...
So, in the event that the adjacent project or property does not get completed, and this project has moved forward, has been approved, what, what is the council's recourse, then? Is it my understanding that that property still has to meet its parking requirement?
This, this project has to meet its parking requirement, you know, and it's not, they cannot deviate from the requirement in the redevelopment plan. So their specific language, basically dealing with the parking, says that parking has to be provided for one space per studio, one bed, 1.25 for two bedrooms, and then the parking shall be provided within, uh, off-site within, uh, 0.25 miles, uh, walking of the subject property. So while generally speaking, the closest site for development is the Holiday Tree and Trim site across the street, but they have to provide parking within a quarter of a mile of there. If they cannot satisfy it, this project dies on the vine, and they cannot consider, go forward. They cannot get a deviation from the, you know, at the planning board level, the, the parking requirement that is specifically written into the plan. This is not a bulk standard.
All prior approvals are rescinded.
The other thing, unless the council, the only time, the only way that this parking requirement is changed is if the council, in its wisdom, decides to do that, which I doubt in this...
Not going to happen.
So that was taken into consideration in this, for this plan.
I appreciate it.
So is it safe to say that the 33rd Street project across the street should be built first before this, so that the parking would be in place?
Yes, but if you...
Because you don't want to build that without having the parking requirement, and it has to wait for approvals?
They, they can't build it without, they have to show and prove that they can build the parking.
Show and prove meaning the structure has to be up and operational before a shovel goes in the ground.
Well, one would think the, the project has to be approved.
The, as I, the, the language in the redevelopment plan goes, the location of the off-site parking shall be identified at the time of a site plan application. Off-site parking shall be secured via a perpetual easement or shall be deeded to the same ownership entity as the redevelopment area. Parking spaces shall be demised as eight by 10, uh, accessible parking, um, shall be, uh, minimized, uh, sorry, pursuant to ADA requirements. The redeveloper shall be responsible for obtaining the city and all land use approvals required for the off-site parking certificates of occupancy shall not be issued until... required for the off-site parking certificates of occupancy shall not be issued until such approvals are obtained and outside any and all appeals periods. So we took into this, into the consideration.
Consideration.
So they won't get a certificate of occupancy without the park?
No.
Okay.
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 But before you leave, you said a quarter of a mile?
Yes.
Okay. Is that a normal line item we place in our redevelopment agreements?
No, this is not because we require onsite parking. This one being an infield, an infield lot on Broadway.
Right.
We either have to do one or two things, or three things. We do this quarter mile, which was recommended by our special redevelopment council, Joe Baumann, for the language in here on that, along with our planners at Beacon. The other two options I don't think are as desirable.
No, we don't want a curb cut on Broadway, which we know is one option.
And you don't want to put part with, a building without any parking. So those are the, those are your three options here.
Again, okay, so I agree, don't want a curb cut on Broadway. Quarter of a mile and the fact that this is an outlier scares me because it sets precedent for the future. The idea of maybe seeking a different structure to be there, a commercial structure, something that doesn't require the amount of parking a residential building requires, would seem more in line. But also, this parking is going to be on what site?
They have to identify at this time of a site plan application. Again, it's understood that it's to be Holiday Tree and Trim, but if Holiday Tree and Trim fails, they have, this is the requirement there that they have to provide the parking within a quarter of a mile, and if they can't, then this fails. And there's no deviation outside the council granting that exception.
Okay, so across the street, we're pushing this to next month. It's not approved yet, but it's in line to be approved, this plan, next month.
It's in being introduced, right?
Introduced, okay. And so Holiday Tree and Trim would then have to agree to put parking in their site to trigger this?
Along in their redevelopment agreement with the city.
I.
But, and again, subject to the property owners also making a deal.
Okay. I would just, again, caution that getting involved in spreading out parking for one structure across several blocks in the town might be a slippery slope to go down. To take a project, say, well, we want a project here, but we're going to spread, because there's going to be five spots here and 10 spots there, and it's going to be three blocks away, and this one's going to be.
Is that, is that, is that within their ability to allocate parking in different locations, or it has to be in the same location?
They, it has to be in the same location, and they have to identify the parking. The other thing is if we built under traditional zoning, even if it's a commercial space of 2,000 square feet, there's still a parking requirement that they will not be able to get, and they would then be able to ask for a variance at the planning board. The reason why this project has gone this way is there was a site plan application being prepared, a technical review committee. We told the developer that you're probably going to walk into a denial. We will not issue favorable reports because you cannot meet your parking requirement.
I personally would not approve of a project having parking not on the same site unless it was unique like this and landlocked.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't like the curb cuts on Broadway. I voted no on the McDonald's project because they went from one curb cut on the side street to three curb cuts, including one on Broadway. Was very unhappy with that project. Everybody knows that already. But, and there's no way to enter that building without crossing a line of traffic.
Agreed. That's why.
So these are the reasons why if it has to be across the street and it's landlocked, I'd rather have that than the curb cut on Broadway.
And has this accommodation been provided previously within the city?
On one project with, on Broadway by Church Lane, and it was a reduction of parking, and the off-site parking spots were put into, well, the Barnabas parking lot. It would be 22. So with the understanding that they will be building parking in the future, and we're still working out the details because they have, are, under the redevelopment agreement are supposed to build the parking lot, the municipal parking lot on Church Lane and 22nd Street.
And we're still working out the details?
Well, the details of that, again, provide, getting the financing to make sure that the project works. That's why, though, in this one, we've made this, we, the city's not involved on the negotiations, just that this is the requirement you have to satisfy. You can't satisfy this, we don't care.
Okay.
I, I believe I'm, I'm comfortable that the requirement is protected and that if the approval given, at least it's, it's being introduced, but if, if any approvals given would be rescinded, and I'm going to assume the developer knows that, if, if the parking arrangement couldn't be worked out. So with that, I vote aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
And I'm happy with the fact that if the project across the street, if that's where the planned parking is supposed to go, if that falls through, they will not get the CO for the apartment across the street. I, I think that satisfies me for that. And with that, I'll vote aye.
Thank you.
Oh, eight is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne County of Hudson approving the access agreement buying between the city of Bayonne and 26 North Avenue Urban Renewal LLC for Block 297, Lot 3 pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law and a resolution moved by the council president fixing Wednesday, September 17th in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It's seconded by Mr. Perez.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, nine is an ordinance authorizing it should be a 30-year lease, not a 99. 30-year lease with the Fire Museum of Bayonne for the city-owned property located at 10 West 47th Street, which is identified as Block 177, Lot 26, actually Block 77, Lot 26, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, September 17th as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It's moved by the council as a whole. And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, 10 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne Chapter 7 traffic. It is restricting, deleting one restrictive parking zone and a resolution fixed, fixing Wednesday, September 17th as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It's moved by Councilmember Perez. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, 11 is also amending and supplementing Chapter 7 traffic, and it is parking prohibited at all times on certain streets, and it will be on the south side of West 16th Street from MUA to the Newark Bay, and it's moved by the council president. Ms. Weimer, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Oh, 13 is also amending Chapter 7 traffic, and it is for parking prohibited at all times on certain streets, and it covers Goldsboro Drive. It's moved by the council president, resolution moved by the council president fixing Wednesday, September 17th in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Madeline?
Yes.
I asked Sue Mack to come if she could give us an update on the progress of Russell Golding Park, so I'm wondering if she could come up and just give us a little overview.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Mack.
Got a lot of things going on. It's so nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well.
Sorry, I have some issues. I haven't been, been here, haven't been here, but I, you see me all. Anyway, I, I really did appreciate the call, Council President. As you know, my park projects are very important to me.
Very.
And as you know, I have two HUD projects. One was Field of Dreams. Field of Dreams was approved in 2023 by the Housing and Urban Development Corporation. 2022, Russell Golding Park was approved. It's one of the largest projects in the country. We were able to receive through Congressman Series $5 million. It's a very large grant and a very big project. And through Tom Carter's office, we have been working feverishly on it. There was a priority put on Field of Dreams to get to their 10th anniversary, and I think everybody was very pleased. But this is a much larger project, and I am happy to report that the project, although you approved going to bid on it a bit ago, I am told that the bid is actually now in its state, and Tommy, it's good now? Tommy, good? Tommy, well, Tommy will come back. It's good, I believe, Council President, you've approved, approved it in concept, and we hope this month to go actually out for bid. And Jay is here, and he will tell you federal grants are very complicated, and I am working on, with Mary Jane Desmond, I'm working on 12 reports from 2022 to 2025. It's going well, and I don't know if I told Jay this, but Jay, we're going to have a call with HUD again, as we did on Field of Dreams. The only requirement they have for us, and I am in touch with them weekly, is that before we go to bid, we just, they'll give us permission to go to bid, but not, not, not approve it, go, you know, finalize it until they are assured that we have filled, fulfilled our environmental impact statement, which we have. The last time we did this, it was Jay called Mike Firda at HUD, Newark. They checked the hero, everything's got a system. Trams, you know, that, the environmental system is heroes. Andy Reichel's company actually prepares the environmental impact. It was approved by HUD, and we now find out that Mike Firda has retired, but we have a replacement for him, so we're putting all our ducks in the row to actually make sure that that project gets out on the street. And I'm, you, you've all been very patient. It's going to be a great project, and I just want to thank you all for sticking with it. And as I said, these federal grants are complicated. Sometimes we wonder why we go after them, but if we stick with them and follow the rules, it's a great, tremendous resource for us to be able to get these, they're called Economic Development Initiative Grants in Bayonne, Bayonne, as, as usual. I don't know if Mary Jane shared with you, we just had a FDA audit of our ferry grant, and I think I can say, Mary Jane, that we were complimented for the fact that the staff in the building really understood the rules and fulfilled them, and that, that was a group effort. I can't tell you how many people were involved in it, but I, I think it's, I think it's testament, we're small. They did mention that we're small. We don't have a lot of people working on these things, but we had no findings, negative findings. It was positive, and I, I appreciate the council because I come up here and I ask you to do things like, you know, I make you come in, you come in for me, you help me get Green Acres grants and stuff because of deadlines and stuff like that, but I can answer any specific questions on it if you want.
I'm just very concerned because it's been three years.
Oh, I'm concerned.
And, you know, spoke to the engineers, and I get a couple different disparaging reports, some telling me worried about the grant money being taken away.
Well.
And I really, really want this project to go because, and people have been asking me, what's wrong with Golding Park? The trees look terrible, the asphalt's terrible. We don't want to fix something up, obviously, if we're going to rip it apart.
No.
So I'm fielding questions, and this is why I called you here.
Yeah, and, and I want to assure you, I share. I mean, you know, I was so excited when we got the money.
And the amount that we got was, was quite large for.
Quite large. And, and in addition, prior to the $5 million, we had $750,000 from Hudson County Open Space, which I've had to go before the commissioners every year, and we're really way over. They've been very patient with us, and I just, the only reason they listen to me is I bring Pete, but they say.
I'll be happy when I can see something a little more concrete as far as.
Well, I'm hoping, I'm.
Bids and dates and, and getting that grant money.
I, I met again with Rob Russo this week on it. He gave me an accounting of how much money has been spent on, on it. It's not a lot yet, but I think it's, you know, so.
I hope they start ramping it up a little bit stronger.
Well, I, I will tell you, Council President, I have a limited time here, and it is, it is my priority to finish it prior to me leaving. So, and I think some people know when that is, so, you know, I keep my commitments to you. You've always kept your commitments to me, and I'm not letting.
We're not working with you. We don't want to see you go, but.
Well, I'm not letting.
If you're going to go, go out with a bang with that project, please.
I'm not letting, I'm not letting 5.75 million.
Yes.
Go with me, and not to get back to it, but, you know, the MOPP improvements, you know, I have, I have my very short list of, very short list, pedestrian bridge over 440, pedestrian bridge to South Cove, the HUD projects, the DEP projects. There are other people here that can pick up on other things I do, but I have a very strong commitment, and it hasn't been, you know, it's just been timing and, I guess, resources and stuff like that, but I, I am assured by Rob Russo that, that he is ready to go to bid this month, and I'm very, I'm very excited about that. That will give us a window. I guess it takes 30 to 60 days to actually get to it. I'm assured, and I've spoken to Mary Jane a million times about this, she's been very helpful to me, that, you know, we get all the HUD stuff, and I've been worried, everybody should be worried about the federal funding. I've been very worried about.
That was one of my big concerns.
I've been worried, but I will tell you, I've gotten no indication. They moved all the grants from Washington to HUD in Newark. I've been given no indication that we're at risk, but I worry by nature.
I thank you always for your, your knowledge and your expertise, and you've helped out a great deal.
Tommy will tell you, I keep after everybody, and he's very helpful. It's, you know, it's, this needs to get out. I mean, it's the largest HUD project probably in the region, so we need to just get it out on the streets, get it awarded. It's harder, I think, Jay, it's harder to cancel us if we actually have an award, so I'm hoping, Jay, I hope when we get it.
We'll call you up from time to time and, and so you can give us an update.
I'm, I'm not leaving tomorrow, so I'd be happy to give you, happy to give you an update on any of these projects.
Thank you, Ms. Mack.
But thank you for all your support.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it.
Moving on to oh, 13. An ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne Chapter 7 traffic and a resolution fixing Wednesday, September 17th in the Dorothy Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and a final passage. It is street sweeping, street cleaning on Goldsboro Drive. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Communications is a resolution ordering the following communications to be received and filed. It covers C-1 through C-16. Any questions on the communications? And on the communications resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Officers' Report is a resolution moved by the council as a whole ordering the following officers' reports to be received and filed, and any resolution incorporated within to be adopted. It covers OR-1 through OR-2. Any questions on the officers' reports? And on the officers' reports, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Consent Resolutions is moved by the council as a whole. It is a resolution ordering the following resolutions to be adopted. It covers CR-1 through CR-36. Any questions on the consent resolution? And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Our one is a resolution moved by the council president authorizing the execution of a funding agreement in connection with the redevelopment of the property located at 35 MUA, which is identified as block 360. Lot 1 and block 332, lots 2, 2.01, 4 and 5, and execute an interim cost agreement. Second, Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Our two is a resolution moved by the council president authorizing the planning board to conduct a preliminary investigation for the properties located at 301 Constitution Avenue and 300-302 Constitution Avenue, which is identified as block 803, lot 1, and block 815, lot 1, as shown in official tax map of the city pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Just for clarification, this is the Alexin Building?
The old, yeah, the Alexin was the old name, Harbor Point.
So this is Harbor Point, a functioning, rented-out building?
This is, again, to see if it studies, to qualify for an area need study. There's, the property owner is looking to potentially develop it, and there is a legal question now to see if it still is within an area need study. With that, given the changes of the flood regulations there, look rules have changed from when the redevelopment plan was adopted 20 years ago. So, this is just authorizing a study to see if it qualifies as an area need.
I disagree. I vote no because I think the planning board is the board of yes all the time. And also, I, I would cite, when the housing authority had to address their flood regulations, they took the apartments on the first floor and moved everyone out of them, and cemented up the windows, made it look very nice, made that a storage area, made sure that it met their flood requirements without having to change their building, essentially, or have a total tear down or reconstruct or anything like that.
I was not aware of that.
At first?
Yep. Oh, no, no, no. Don't, you were talking about this.
Well, he just mentioned this is about their flood regulations.
Well, no, this is-
It's not about the flood regulations, they wanted a redo, like a redesign of the whole place.
It, this is-
Why would we engage in an area need for a private entity to-
This just allows the planning board to give the investigation back to us, and you could say no when, you could say no whenever you want, but I'm just saying, when it comes back to us, if you don't like whatever plan they're saying, you could vote no, whether the planning board votes yes or not. They're not the elected officials, we are.
And I agree.
Council president, you're exactly right. This, all this is doing is authorizing to see if it meets the criteria is under an area need from A through H. Our planners will look at it to see if it does. If it doesn't, then, you know, it fails right there. You know, there are some concerns of yes, you're right, Councilman Carroll, this is a relatively new building in the City of Bayonne, but the rules have changed with it for, you know, different flood zones, different height requirements.
Truth be told, this council should know that they were given a pilot, and when a new owner came in, they redid the pilot for them, and you should know that too. So, moving forward, looking at any other plan, keep that in your mind.
That they were given a subsequent pilot to their original.
The new owner applied for a different rate in their pilot, and it was given to them.
When was that?
Um, I don't know the exact year when we first came in with Mayor Davis, 2014 or 15, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Okay. Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Our three is designating 1191-1195, 1197, and 1199 JFK Kennedy Boulevard, which is identified as block 32, lots 10, 11, and 12, as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment, and authorizing the planning board to prepare a redevelopment plan pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. It's moved by the council president, Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Our four is a resolution moved by council member Booker designating 81-87 East 22nd Street, which is identified as block 449, lot 6, and 7.01, as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment, and authorizing the planning board to prepare a redevelopment plan pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
No, this is the center of the block property. I mentioned earlier in this meeting that, you know, these things are, they have wide-reaching, wide-reaching implications. And I just, I don't think that area is in requirement of it.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Our five is moved by the council president designating 10-37-1041 Broadway, which is identified as block 45, lot 20, as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment, and authorizing the planning board to prepare a redevelopment plan pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
No, in, in, my reasoning is, I think this is the parking lot across from Ace Hardware on 51st Street.
Catty corner across from, yep.
And again, it just sounds like this is step one on the way to eliminating that parking in that area, or perhaps engaging in some sort of, you can have parking, but it'll be three blocks away type thing. I, I think it's zoned for what it's zoned for, it can be built, we don't need to change it.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Our six is being withdrawn until September. Our seven is approving the Third Amendment to the amended and restated redevelopment and purchasing and sales agreement with KRE. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
On that resolution?
Let's just, what is the?
The KRE's deadline is going to be moved to-
This is moving the time for KRE to close with the City of Bayonne. Where, with the, with the purchase and sale agreement, they have a deadline. We're negoti, the, the city and KRE both agree that they're not going to meet the deadline to close, and KRE is afraid that we will default them, which we would not do, so we're looking to just extend this to June 30th of 2026.
And what property is this?
This is a triangle piece of property on the base across from KRE and the Gupta's, north of the Gupta property and east of the KRE buildings. This is a wooded area right now.
We have woods in Bay-
We have woods, you have deer, I've driven past it, and-
We have the yellow, yellow crown night herons. You have to remember that, Joe. Turkeys, we have a lot of turkeys.
Okay, and we are amending it because, what is the holdup on the?
The holdup is, again, the negotiations back and forth on the potential change of use for there. KRE does not want to, you know, they want to switch and not build residential apartments there. They want to switch it to something else, to which we're negotiating with them for a high-end entertainment recreational user. So, give, given the fact of the, we have to, and this is also-
And we feel that that necessitates an additional year?
Nine months.
Nine months?
Yes. This is coming from our special redevelopment council's request. This isn't me, this, our lawyer, Joe Baumann, specifically asked, you know, for this extension.
Okay, thank you. I vote aye.
Not a good poker player at all.
I'll start with Mr. Booker first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Carroll?
For recreation, to give all these people moving in something to do, sure.[1644.41]